Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can I get somebody to approve 1.02 to approve the agenda?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Pass is 5-0-0. Were there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, two items were added, 7.8, which was the adding of teaching assistance, a resolution for teaching assistance, and 7.16, which is with the adding of replacement teachers.
Thank you. In the event of an emergency and we need to evacuate the building, we have two exits out of our room. Just please move as far away from the building as possible. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There is nobody signed up for public forum this evening, so can I get somebody to move action 1.06 to approve the August 12 regular meeting minutes?
Move it.
Second. Okay, hold on.
Who did we get?
Just moved it and I think her or Gloria seconded it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Just a couple of things coming up to end out our summer. This is quite a busy week. We have our board walkthroughs that start tomorrow. Tomorrow we start at Fairgrave, go to Gramby, and then over to the junior high where they also are having the welcome back picnic for our seventh graders. Then we do go to our second round of building walkthroughs on the 28th, and we're going to start at Lanigan, go to Valenee, go to the high school, and then come back here to the ed center. So we're kind of all over the city on Thursday evening. We also have our first day of school starting on the 4th. Our staff is in on the 3rd, correct?
Yes.
So I can't believe that's right around the corner already. And then our next regular board meeting is September 9th. Also, you guys, some of us and all of the administrators, you guys just came from the stuff of us.
Yes.
That seemed to be pretty busy and super exciting to see all the kids and thanks to everybody who was able to be over there and help. I heard right at four o'clock it was back down the highway? Did they wrap around the buildings?
Down the road.
That is.
It's a great sign, and it was shared about 740 students.
740? Wow, that is amazing. Yes. And you got to serve ice cream to all those students?
Ice cream line was a little slow, but that's okay.
That was slow? Really? You need a bigger sign.
No, no. The ice cream servers.
Backed up.
Oh, the scoopers. Okay, because I would say when I was there, you guys were like on top of things. It was.
It depended on how melty the ice cream was. It was very hard.
Oh my goodness. Well, I'm glad that everybody had an opportunity to enjoy that event. It's wonderful for our students and their families, so. And then we also have Ms. Proll here this evening to share with us. She went to a leadership conference with Mr. DeJalorme and Superintendent Lawrence a couple weeks back now, right?
Beginning of August.
Beginning of August. Anything you'd like to share with us?
A couple highlights. They talked about the Mahmoud versus Taylor, which is really an extension of Wisconsin versus Yoder from 1972, which was some Amish families did not want their children to go to high school because they thought it would hurt their religious beliefs. So Mahmoud versus Taylor is just an extension of that with the LGBTQ, and it's sort of the same thing, but there's been some talk about people not agreeing with some of the curriculum that might be into schools. So Mahmoud versus Taylor says there's selective opt-out, where certain parts of the lesson, if it goes against your religious beliefs, you can opt out of that. They will not change the curriculum. It doesn't mean you're out for the whole unit. You're just out for the parts that you don't believe in. And, excuse me, the curriculum does not have to change, so they won't change it because of this. We all know the cell phone ban takes effect this year. That is still kind of, see what happens. The electric buses, New York State's transitioning to the electric buses starting in 2027, which means that any new bus, school purchases from 2027 has to be electric. But they have, they're coming out with some waivers, like you can have two separate two-year waivers. They'll allow those. Those would be because of maybe students where they live. They live far away, or if the, there's infrastructure issues, things like that. Another thing is the Blue Ribbon Commission. They've made some recommendations on graduation measures. They have four recommendations, which are, I think they're between now and 2029?
Correct.
Okay. The first one, which they've really already started, was adopt a New York State portrait of a graduate, which we've pretty much done. The next one is redefine credits and learning experiences to show expanded ways that students could show proficiency, like work-based, PTEC, things like that. The next would be the SUNSET diploma assessment, which they would, they wouldn't require standardized tests or regents, things like that. And then the final would be to move to one New York State diploma. And another thing they touched on was every board is required to have a student rep, and we've been doing that for, I'm not really sure how many years, but, so. And then there were other things they talked about, a lot to do with the budget and things like that, but we found out there were more questions that we had than we had answers to, so.
Well, thank you for going and bringing back all that information for us. You guys, is that a day and a half, two days?
Day and a half.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, just, I think the big piece with the Blue Ribbon Commission and just them stressing that we do have, it's until 2029, and as Ms. Proll mentioned, that first phase is underway, but the rest of it, they really don't have any answers to. So at this point, we're kind of in a waiting pattern, so. Information, I know some districts are rushing to get ahead of it, and they're stressing, don't do that yet because it'll likely change.
Okay. Very good. Well, with that, we will pass it on over.
Can I just ask one question really quick?
Sure.
Are we starting at Fairgrave tomorrow? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. I just, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We'll pass it on over to Superintendent for his reports.
All right, so really no presentations tonight because of the later start, but do want to recognize the work that happened to make Stuff of Us happen. Great effort through our community. Karen Knoll took a lead in these efforts and organizing everything. I know our administrative team has done quite a bit to help the FTA, other staff members, so really nice coming together of the community. So it was, for me, first experience there, so great to see, and it sounds like each year has just continued to build. So looking forward to this event growing even more. Obviously, it also helps us to kick off into our new school year. So right now, for our team, it's a lot of work happening behind the scenes to get prepared for staff coming back on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then the big day was students showing on Thursday. So it's an exciting time of the year, and we're looking forward to everyone returning. After than that, we, no updates.
Okay. So we're good? All right. So we're starting something a little new with our board meetings, and we're going to roll into what we call the Student Representative Reports. So Gwen will be able to share with us weekly if she has anything that she wants to share with us. If you and Gwen want to do a brief overview of what that might look like?
Sure. And we just had a conversation about this earlier in the week, so it's somewhat new for Gwen at this point, and I don't know if she's coming with information to share or not, and not to put her on the spot, but I had mentioned, so other school districts are doing this. This is actually one of the things that came from the conference that we were at earlier this year as well, where student representatives did have their own section on the agenda itself for their board meetings, and really just reporting out on any issues, concerns that may be coming up that Gwen may be soliciting from students. We would have a meeting ahead of time to talk through some solutions to maybe some of those issues, and this would be her platform to share with the board. So again, didn't want to put her on the spot for her first meeting being here, but we were excited to have this opportunity for her to be on the agenda itself, and we understand there will be some meetings sometimes in the year that it may be just a short report out on events that are happening.
And then maybe some weeks that you don't have anything to report?
Correct.
Because it might be a quiet, you know, month or a week over for you guys, so. No, I love this. I think that my school district does this as well, so I think this is great, you bringing your peers' voices to the table and sharing with the community what's going on inside the buildings, so it's great. Thank you.
Did you have anything? No, okay.
All right. Moving on to action 5.01, accept financials. Can somebody move that?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Action 5.02 to approve the tax warrant.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, we're going to do a roll call here.
Aye.
Nope, nope, I knew that. I just had to look down. So I'm a yes. Mr. Commerce is not here. Mr. DeJalorme not here. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayneville?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Proll?
Yes.
Action 5.03 to approve the participation in cooperative energy services for electricity.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Action 5.04 to approve participation in cooperative energy services for natural gas.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Action 5.05 to approve the revised contract with the City of Fulton Special Patrol Officer School Resource.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Action 5.06 to approve facilities to use agreement for the 25-26 school year.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Action 5.07 to approve employee benefits, the broker consultant.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Action 6.01 is to approve committee on special education.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Action 6.02 to approve the 25-26 district-wide safety plan.
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. Can I get a college to batch for our personnel, 7.01 to 7.16?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Pass is 5-0-0. All right, board forum. Mrs. Mayneville, would you like to start?
I see that there's a lot more movement at the schools themselves just this past week along with, you know, teachers getting back and athletics starting, so this is our last meeting before school officially starts, so I hope everybody has a great start to the year. I hope everybody's cup is filled and you had time to recharge, and you get to come into work with a positive attitude, just a positive mindset, because that just, that vibe just spreads.
Exactly.
So, yeah, if you're happy, everybody around you most likely will be happy too, so.
Very good. Ms. Proll?
I want to agree with Ms. Mayneville, and I get, didn't get, I saw a lot of teachers that I knew over at the ice skating rink, and I did see a lot of energy over there, a lot of excitement and stuff, so. And I want to say, you know, thank you to Karen Knoll and Ms. Trude, that they did an awesome job over at the ice skating rink with the giveaways. I mean, kids were really excited, parents were excited, so thank you for that.
Mrs. O'Brien? I want to piggyback on what Mrs. Proll said. Thank you so much for doing all the hard work. I know that throughout the year, this event is thought about and how it's going to become better, and it's amazing to see what it's become since when it first started in just the high school, or the elementary school. And it's amazing to see the energy of all the kids getting excited and appreciative and very excited about their new school year, and just hope that that excitement can go forward in the, for the school year, and that there's a lot of possibilities that can happen, and I can't wait to see them. And thank you so much, Mrs. Proll, for bringing back the things that were talked about at the conference.
Thanks. Yes. Awesome. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Ditto to all of my colleagues said. I just also wanted to do a shout out to also our community members that are coming in and volunteering their time, the haircuts and things like that, huge, it's a huge part of their day, you know, giving back to our community. Our students appreciate it, you know, so much. I think we heard something, over 700 students were served today with backpacks, that's like 30% of our population, our student population. It's huge, it's, you know, tremendous, and Mrs. Knoll and the FTA does a phenomenal job with that. And I just wanted to piggyback the news section. I'm really excited to hear from our student helper report, Gwen. I'm very excited to hear that, and also just tossing out there, things that we're doing well. Like what are things, what are students really excited about? What are opportunities, you know, that they didn't know, that areas where we can grow and things like that would also be great, you know, those slower weeks where there's not much going on, so always look at positivity. And thank you so much for all of our admin staff and all the hard work and all the PD that's been going on the past few weeks behind the scenes. Thank you so much. And that's it.
Hi, Gwen, do you have anything that, I mean, I hope that you had opportunity to relax and enjoy some summer and, you know, get ready for, you know, this big senior year that you're about to take on.
Yeah, I had a pretty decent summer. I'd like to say that the Stuff of Us event, it was amazing to see so many community members come together to make this event happen, and, yeah, it was just nice to see.
And thank you for helping out over there.
It was busy, like really busy.
We ran out of a lot of.
Yeah, we ran out. We didn't even make it an hour.
Wow. So we know we have some room to grow for next year. Everybody's hearing about us. I'm not a hot topic. So I was able to, along with some other members, help at the collection for Stuff of Us on the first day that felt like fall. It was raining and cold that day, but overwhelmed with the community members that still came out and drove to drop off supplies to help you all with the actual activities that went on today, so thank you to Mrs. Knoll and everybody. I mean, it's just wonderful. I guess that's the theme for tonight, our thank you so much for our community and our FTA and everybody who's taken part. It was great to see the students run up to their former teachers all excited and to tell them who their new, I mean, I could hear them tell who their new teachers were. It was just, it's exciting to see that positivity and excitement on the students' faces, so we as adults, you know, we, I personally don't want summer to end, but it is wonderful to be back with our students, so I, you know, I'm excited too for next week. All right, with that, we are going to, there's nobody in the public forum? Okay, so we're going to move on and go into our brief executive session. Can I have somebody move that, please?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? And thank you all for joining us this evening, and have a wonderful rest of your summer. Um, and thank you all for joining us this evening, and have a wonderful rest of your summer.